People didn't know about it, it brings about different opportunities to look at situations. At a previous council meeting, all of the members and the mayor acknowledged that the comprehensive plan and future land use map are complex and confusing. If it is acknowledged that the mixed residential is complex and confusing, it stands to reason that the remaining types in the entire future land use map are equally complex and confusing. Entire future land use map is complex and confusing. I kind of live by saying you don't know what you don't know until you know it, okay? And I'll ask again, why if the 2019 zone map was fine two years ago, why the massive overhaul into the future land use map? Why not stay with what was approved two years ago? In the case of the housing and land use elements, it has been acknowledged that there are still a lot of things that you, we, and all don't really know and understand yet. This is too important to go into action until all aspects can be fully dissected and understood and that there is no complexity and confusion as to what is really happening. The long-term ramifications, once implemented, cannot be taken back. Once buildings are built, it's too late. Look at all the purple on the future land use map. That's a lot of people. That's facilitating a lot of people. The issue is not buildings, the design of the building, the landscaping, and the zebras, et cetera. The issue is how many people and the density of the people that are facilitated by the buildings. The people bring the traffic, the crowded schools, the public places, and on and on and on. I'm a broken record on that. I believe that more commercial and light industrial development is needed to shift the tax burden back a little bit for more of a balance between the homeowners and the businesses. Instead of so much residential, how about some more commercial and light industrial, especially out there in that area around the airport? Are we more interested in doing things in the interest of ease or time, or are we interested in doing it right and what is best for the people of the city? At the council meeting on August 24th, there was discussion about split zones and non-conforming. Yes, it's time-consuming and a pain, but it's too late to change the structure, so let's read all the little lines and get everybody, you know, in their, in their box with the zoning that they already have, I guess. At one hour and 14 minutes of the meeting, Ms. Phillips says, "We've heard resoundingly that the public is not enamored with higher density in any way, shape, or form." The type of high density has a very large footprint on the future land use map, that being the purple mixed use. And here's what I saw about the new information, that the interim ordinance allows for zone and text or zone map amendments. I'm going to ask to pause the entire future land use map and stay with the 2019 zone map. Please place the entire future land use map under an interim ordinance so that it can be more investigated, reviewed, and determined about the complexities and the confusion and the things that people really do not understand at this time. What's the hurry? You'll have 12 months, just like with the mixed residential, to get a real good look at what this is going to bring to the city. And I say this for the following reasons. At one hour and 25 minutes of the meeting, Mayor Griffith says, "People are concerned. As a city, we try to do too much at once, too much too soon. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be fixed from years and years ago. Let's everybody take a deep breath. We need to communicate more clearly with respect to specific zoning. It will help all the city come together. A lot was done too quickly without adequately communicating to the citizens." Speaking for myself, I don't think this just applies to mixed residential. I think it applies to the entire future land use map. At one hour 27, Mr. Satterfield says, "The overwhelming thing he sees is confusion. This is a very complicated and complex. It's difficult." Mr. Satterfield says he was on P&amp;Z for three years and he doesn't know if he truly understands it. Mr. Satterfield says, "Give everyone a chance to breathe and decide what do they want for where they live. Maybe after a year of review, we can get it right." I think that applies to the entire future land use map. At 1:28:30 of the meeting, Mr. Pennerbaker says, "He thinks Mr. Satterfield covered it." Doesn't know anybody that understands this. Quote, "You know something? We," the council, I'm assuming, "don't even know what's going on. It's going to take time to do it right." I think that applies to the entire future land use map.
And your time is up.
Can I have 20 seconds?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Delane basically agreed, okay? I think it all applies to the future land use map. How many corrections really need to be made? Ms. Phillips indicated that in their research, they found things that need to be corrected. The city may impose conditions upon rezoning, blah, blah, blah. I guess here it is to conclude. Please slow down the entire future land use map process, put the entire future land use map into an interim ordinance to allow a thorough review and scrutiny of how it will affect the citizens in the long term. What's the hurry? Use the time, as Mr. Satterfield remarked, for the people to see exactly what is happening and decide what they want from where they live. Thank you very much.
Sandy White.
Hello, my name is Sandy White. I live at 909 West D. Court Street. So I'm also asking that the approval of the future land use map be delayed. I was in the planning and zoning meeting Monday night, and they approved different zoning items that I feel are contradictory. They approved to delay the residential multifamily zoning for a year, but also to approve 12 to 15 units for max use. And I feel like the approval of the future land use map and the comp plan components in parts is very confusing. For example, the annexation on Atlas will be rezoning agricultural all the way to single-family, and that will really change the lifestyle of all the people in the neighborhood surrounding the property asking to be annexed. So the plan and the map really does need work. So I'm asking that decisions regarding the future land use map be delayed.
Yeah, Sandy, you've got to stop for a minute because that wasn't...
Is that, is that the only comment you have on the annexation, Sandy? Okay, sorry. It just is a public hearing that will come before them.
Because we can't talk about that until we talk about it.
That's fine. Thank you. Didn't want to interrupt. Thank you.
So we'll look, so we can look further to see if it might be wiser to stick to our 2019 map. And I'd also like to publicly announce that I am running for Hayden City Council on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. 3A, action item approval of resolution amending the capital improvement plan for public safety impact fees.
This is just to formally have a resolution adopting the change to the capital improvement plan for the public safety impact fees that you approved in the last meeting. This is to add to that capital improvement plan, a doc at Henningsuckle for the sheriff's vote. So it just needs a resolution to accompany that, to make that change so that we could start working on spending those collective fees for that item.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution amending the capital improvement plan for public safety impact fees?
Yes, we do.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just this one question. The monies that we have collected thus far for this impact fee, safety impact fee, can we continue to keep that to use it for the new boat house, or do we have to return that?
The sooner we can get it under a contract to construct the dock, the more of the fees we will be able to use. We have been refunding some fees. Yeah, they drop off in order of first in time collectives, first in, first out. So we've had some, the oldest have been refunded. Sandy, a couple thousand, I think, have been refunded at this point?
Yes, started last year in September, so about a year into it.
So we still have about 60,000 that we could spend, just over that amount, I think, just over 60,000. So the sooner, yeah, the sooner we can get under, under a contract to secure that, the more funds we will be able to spend on it.
And again, we're looking for the county to also put up some money to build this. It's us, us, us.
We will need an MOU, memorandum of understanding with the county regarding the site. The money should cover the dock in the entirety. We will have to be probably jointly on a Department of Lands permit. We've talked to the Department of Lands already. They've signaled that they don't have any problem because we need an encroach from the permit on the way to have a dock. No issue with that. And then just a long-term agreement on maintenance, you know, we can use the funds for it, but then we're, you know, turning it over to the county to use for that. So the, I think that earlier estimations, the staff received on the dock came in the 40s, so we should clear enough money to cover that in the financing.
It was in the last, when we reviewed it, that was like 46.
Okay, yeah. And it covered the, I believe it covered the dock and the gate, the security gate.
My understanding is it'll cut the response time that the sheriff would have on Hayden Lake by maybe a couple hours. Is that correct?
Is that right?
In the summer. So I think that's why I listed the public safety thing, and I think it was a great idea.
It's a really good use of the funds, so I think it's exciting for the city to be able to use that.
Any further discussion? Hearing number call vote, please.
Councilmember Roder.
Yes.
Council President Satterfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Delane.
Yes.
And Councilmember Pennerbaker.
Yes.
Thank you. 4A, action item approval contingent bid award resolution for Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board wastewater treatment plant phase two construction.
Mayor, council, Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board here today. They have been working for a number of years.
I can come over here.
Thought you could hear me.
Yes, you can.
Be more than happy to come up here and stand before the council.
So Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board is here tonight. They've been working for a number of years on the upgrade to the sewer treatment plant. Majority of this work is regulatory-driven. There are some other elements in it that make sense, the underground that we want to get in ahead of time so that we don't have to dig up some stuff that's already been approved. But Mike's here from JUB, and he's going to go over the deal, and it's a bid, and they need to get it awarded. We are on somewhat of a timeframe. We're not in a crunch yet, but we do have an obligation to get these improvements done as part of the permitting process for the treatment plant.
Mike, just a minute. Do you need to answer?
So hit the two arrows.
Yeah, the two arrows.
DJ, sir?
Yes.
You got it wrong. Go ahead.
So, yeah, I'm Mike Long, JUB engineer. I'm going to give you a quick summary. This has been a long project, multiple phases, so this is kind of the culmination of all that work. Here with Kevin here from Harv, as well as Steph over at Harv. So as Alan said, this project began clear in 2011 with facility planning efforts. We started with the first phase of work. Sorry. There we go. I guess that's what I need to do. First phase of work, expanded the project, the facility to get the initial phosphorus requirement of half milligram per liter. So your long-term plan over a 10-year window from 2014 through 2024 is to get to under 20.05 milligrams per liter, which is another factor of 10 lower. The first project added biological nutrient removal. You can see quite a bit of the expansions, newer portions going to the west side of the facility. Also added overflow equalization to attenuate the peaks that come into it throughout the course of the day. So that project is wrapped up when it's completed in 2015. This new phase is looking at, again, bringing that phosphorus number significantly lower by order of magnitude 10 times. Going through this quick summary of what we're doing. So we've got a tertiary solids clarifier that flow from the current plant will go through. It will settle out a large portion of the phosphorus there as a pre-treatment step. From there, it flows into ultrafiltration membrane filtration. So this is drinking water treatment plant-type technology, so very high-quality water for the liquid stream. In that process, we separated now the solids, that then get pushed over to the de-watering facility, and then ultimately to, from there, they get processed. We reduce the liquid and separate liquid and solids, and they get pushed into a large solar dryer building where they get spread. We do, we use evaporative solar technology, basically just passive radiation, you know, solar radiation to dry the solids from there. So the outline there kind of generally shows where we're at. That is a 30-second synopsis of a very large project, but I want to at least give you some context of what we're doing. So that project has been under design for a year and a half plus. Harv's pre-qualified seven general contractors. They had to be actively involved during the process. Three of them dropped out during that process. Only there was four available to receive bids from. We opened bids on the 31st. Two of the four submitted bids, Apollo Construction and TML Construction. The low bid from TML Construction here is presented. And again, the resolution today is looking for recurrence for the city Hayden to Harv's resolution. So Harv's went through, evaluated the bids. In blue is the raw bid that came in. Harv's chose not to award additive alternates two and three. One is some additional paving, and the other is a pipeline that would connect some roofing within the plant on some of their utility water for washdown purposes. Those could be done at a later date. They could be added late in the project if funds are available. So they're trying to be prudent, you know, looking at things we could delay if we needed to. So the portions in red here are what we are looking at rewarding to the general contractor. From a much larger status, how this fits into the overall program budget for this, so...
Can you help, Doc, please?
Sure.
If the left-hand side equates, and that's what I wanted to see, is it 800? What is the left blue total bid?
12.855 million.
And the bid on the right?
12.665.
Yet. Okay, so 190, so 200, and the difference is because of the two that were not awarded.
Correct.
So we're okay. The math is good.
Correct. Yep. So this is one piece of a much larger program for the overall project. So these, this is kind of an accounting summary, and I believe Steph has additional information we can go through with how that fits with all the funding. But there's a lot more going on. Harv's is actually, throughout the course of the project, they have pre-procured a lot of the materials and equipment to help speed the process for construction. So those, a lot of those things are moving forward to the tune of item four there. There's $7.8 million in buildings, processing equipment, and things like that that the contractor will install as part of this project. So from a total overall budget standpoint, this is a $24.4 million project. That then gets pushed through the funding agreement. So Hayden's portion, and I don't want to speak out of turn. I'm not sure, Steph, that's where you want to step in and talk. If there's technical questions, I'm more than happy to kind of walk through any of those, and I can go back to this parallel photo over there.
So when we push it through with...
Who are you, ma'am?
I am Stephanie Oliver with the Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board. And so when we push that 24 million through the spreadsheets, what we're looking at is that the city's portion of those spreadsheets, you can get on down to the second page here, on the 24 million, it's small down here, sorry about that. I'll try and get it so you can see it, is actually 11.8 million. However, because of the way the funding with phase one and phase two do, the actual amount that will be owed by the city on the second phase is 9.8 million, which is what you have your loan for. With EQ, you have a total availability of 10.4 million. This is estimating that the city of Hayden will have allocated a total of 600 ERs from what we originally discussed this back in July of 2020. At this point in time, you have 285 allocations still left of the 600, and so you have enough money to fund the portion that was discussed back in July of 2020.
I think Stephanie, as you mentioned at the Harv's meeting last week, the true-up, we'd have a better cost, we'd have a better idea of the numbers in January 2023.
Yeah. The construction is slated to go through, I don't know if the guys want to answer this, but the construction is slated to hopefully end in December of 2022 to January of 2023. We have to be in total compliance by November 2023, of '24. So we have to have a year of startup and then a year to be in compliance.
We asked Steph when we went through the numbers last year, so that figure on the 11 million and then the breakdown on that sheet, if everybody's looking at that in their packet, we followed two, her number two, immediately down. Yeah, it's 9,863,544 dollars and 29 cents, excuse me. So that's for 600 ERs. We, and Harv's presented that last year before we approved the third restated funding agreement for the city. We asked Steph for what, so that's the 600 ERs, what 900 would be, just to get an idea for the city's cost, assuming if the project went over or just for connections and just what the city's costs would be. And it is 10.5.
10.53.
Yeah, and we've got current DDQ authority for 10.4.
And then you have a $3 million bond that could be used to feed it.
Right, my understanding as well. So the city has enough to cover it, but we just wanted an idea of the numbers of what that breakdown would be, so.
And another information for you too, you guys have been running about an allocation of about 200 ERs. And so if your allocation stays the same, you will have enough ERs to be right around that 600.
200 ERs per year?
Yes. In 2019, you're 166, and in 2020, you're 214, and so far this year, you're at 167. So if you get to where you presume you're going to be, you'll be about 200 ERs.
When we did the third restated funding agreement last year, we looked historically five years back, and it was just about 180 with 178.9, they averaged 180, so 200 rounding up to get some padding for the city. But that's what it is per year.
Question, when the plant, phase two is completed, how many ERs will be, and what increase in ERs will occur with the new phase two?
There is none. This is a replacement regulatory project. This is not an expansion project. The only expansion that is going into this project is for what is in the ground so that we don't have to re-dig up and expand a tank that you really can't expand. I mean, basically, the expansion component is just so we don't have to dig up and redo existing equipment.
And another follow-up question is, our sewer rate increase had two basic elements to it that are repay every two months. One is the MABC lawsuit, correctly, if I'm wrong, is now pay for phase two. Is that correct? So what's happening?
And continue to pay for phase one.
Phase one. So when we, if we approve this, is that already factored into the future rate increase?
Yes.
For our sewer, this phase two?
Yes.
So that's it. So people that are paying additional sewer rates, they're going to pay for this 24 million dollar, well, we're not, our portion of that 24 million. So this is a direct result of that sewer... 24 is not, and Sandy, only the nine, right?
Right, our portion.
No, but just for the record, 20, 24 is not discussed. It's the nine, seven of the 15. So the 24 hasn't been addressed yet in any, in any...
Well, in all of the other entities account for that too.
That's right, but just for the record, so.
So they're owing that.
So it's nine, not 24, but you're right. And that's where your 74 came in, when you were talking about previously from an ownership.
I mean, you were correct in that we're about 74% of the pie. It's just a one-third ownership. On the JUB.
One-third voting. It seems real fair.
Steph and Kenneth heard this before. They heard, they know. If Brett were here, he'd say the same thing.
In the last 20 years, that's changed considerably because the sewer district used to be the majority, and over the years, it has changed.
Correct.
Great, Steph.
That's all I had for numbers.
Any other questions? There's a, this was a big packet. There was a lot of work. I'd like those that serve on Harv to make comments first, please.
Well, if you've been, I've been doing this a lot of years, and I get confused by numbers like this, big numbers, because they're all over the place. But from day one, this has been a monumental thing that we've done to get where we are today, including the purchase of the land out there for 150 acres that we have, which was ahead of everybody else so that we could stay out of the river. But a lot of this, and most of it, is just because of government regulation. It's not because we want to have a million people living out on the prairie or anything like that, the government. And, and that is, is decided at the state line by the EPA and the DOE in Washington, how much we can contribute to what's in the river. So most of this stuff is out of our hands. We just have to comply with it, or they'll have fines against us. I don't know if anybody's ever had to fan, but they own you anyway. So they work very hard to come up with these numbers. The companies that we deal with, we're not, you know, we're not engineers, people like me aren't engineers. But through the years, we've had the very best people you could get look at this kind of stuff, and this is where we are, and I think we've done a heck of a good job. And it's pretty hard to tear it all apart and say, "Oh, you shouldn't be doing this. You shouldn't be planning for the future," but that's not the case. You need to do it.
This doesn't extend capacity, Steph. That's the, I think, the important piece, frustratingly or not. Thank you. Any other comments?
What about Andrew? Well, I was pleasantly surprised to see the bids come in lower than what JUB projected. So that was good news. In today's climate of construction, I was expecting, you know, to get boom smack on this. So that's great. And, you know, and TML's the low bidder. In my former life, I've worked with TML. The thing that I have always appreciated about that particular company was the fact that they don't make their profit off of change orders, which a lot of, well, I shouldn't say a lot, some companies like to do. And it, it's important to know that this particular company also works with you, not against you. And I think anybody that's worked with TML recognizes the fact that they, they want to produce a good product, but they also want to leave the customer happy. And to do that, you have to work together and minimize the change orders and just work together and find ways to make the project better, whether that be a lower cost or better equipment. So Harv's is, you know, I'm an alternate on the Harv's board. I think that Ken, Stephanie, everybody is, the board's done their due diligence here, and I'm pleasantly surprised on the bid.
Any other comments? I have a few questions, just because of the whole Harv's thing, because I'm not on that board. Dick, you've been on that board, what'd you say, 35 years?
Off and on for 30 years.
He has the most knowledge probably of anybody on the council, I understand, and now you're the current chairman of the board, correct? Yeah. By the way, do you know who the president of TML Construction is?
You know, I didn't know that until you did your little investigation. I had no connection whatsoever with the person being on the planning until anything happened.
Do you know who, who, who the president is?
I can't remember the name right now.
Is he in this room?
I heard he was going to be here, but I don't know if he did or not, because I never met him.
Okay, and is he, who, who is the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I don't, I don't know.
Of Hayden's?
Yes, I know. I know who you're asking about.
Is he, is he in this room?
I don't know that. I don't know that either.
Is Mr. Brian Peterson here?
And that's who that is, isn't it? Yeah.
Right here?
Yeah, if you could raise your hand, are you the chairman of the Hayden Planning and Zoning Commission?
I am.
And are you the president of TML Construction, Inc.?
I am.
Okay, I'd like to ask a question of HARB. Has TML Construction, Inc. ever had any other contracts with, has HARB's had any contracts with TML Construction in the past?
Yes, we have.
Do you have any idea how many?
Several, I can't tell you an exact amount.
At least three, at least three contracts.
So I'm gonna ask you, Dick, because I don't know if this is, do you perceive any conflict of interest there that may be real or perceived that the chairman of the Hayden Planning and Zoning Commission is also the president of the company that we're awarding a $12 million contract?
We have opinions from our attorneys. We have three attorneys that are involved in the whole thing between Hayden, Hayden Lake, Hamilton County. Our attorneys looked at all this stuff, and there has never been any recommendation or any idea that there was any conflict in any of this. They came highly recommended, we have an opinion from our attorney that there is no conflict there, but I'm glad we have you here. Because since you're able to do all this stuff and spend so much time investigating everything we do, then we can get rid of the attorneys and all the engineers and all the people that know anything, and we can rely on you to do your homework, and you do it. I wish you'd get a life.
So for the, for Hayden's, Steph can probably speak to HARB's attorney who's looked into this. Since HARB's, oh, I was just gonna say, I, you know, Councilmember Roder reached out to me, I did send it to HARB's attorney so she could independently evaluate it as well. I haven't talked to the other JPA members. I assessed it under Title 74, Chapter 5, and Title 18, Chapter 13, which both have provisions of contracts with officers. There's a non-compensated official provision in 74-510, which talks about if you're a non-compensated official serving on a commission, which Brian is. And Shady said it states, shall not be prohibited from having an interest in any contract made or entered into by the board of which he is a member, as long as it strictly observes the procedure set forth in Section 18-1361A. That's not applicable to Brian here, I assessed because Brian isn't on HARB's. HARB's is the entity entering into the contract, so it isn't applicable, it is its own separate entity. And then further, even if 181361A did apply, it doesn't, even if it was the city, TML Construction wouldn't be prohibited from being able to bid on it anyways, just as long as the provisions of the statute are followed. So I assessed, I assessed it under the statutes that are applicable and on point, and because Brian Peterson doesn't serve on HARB's, it's not a board of which he's a member that's entering, he's entering into a contract with, as president of TML, there's no conflict with the statutes. And Steph, I don't know if you want to talk with HARB's?
I have a question, was Councilmember Roder aware of this information?
He was. Yeah, he reached out to me and I said, I'll look into it under the statutes.
Which he has a perfect right to do so. Any of us, if we have a conflict of interest issue, can go to you or make anyone aware as we can. So, so Councilmember Roder did go to you with a concern with respect to conflict of interest. Did you respond to him with respect to your opinion? That was done on September 10th, 2021, at 12:29 is the first email that I have a copy of, is that correct?
That's Friday, yes.
And, and so Councilmember Roder brought up very appropriately some concern with respect to conflict of interest, and you were able to respond to him after having done your research.
Correct, based on the, as Mr. Peterson's role as chairman of Planning and Zoning, which again is a non-compensated position, so that there are statutes that apply, and wading my way through the statutes. And, and as I explained, Councilmember Roder and to all of you, as you know, conflicts are really fact and circumstance specific, so I have, you know, have to look into it and assess the statutes and the ones that are relevant. And through doing so, I didn't find any conflict.
Thank you.
And Steph may be able to talk about what Keisha, Keisha Oxendine is the attorney for HARB's, she's not here today, but.
No, basically, it was the fact that because HARB's is a separate legal entity, and since Mr. Peterson is not a member of HARB's, there is no conflict of interest.
So I'd like to respond, I think the mayor brought up the issue that I did contact Caitlin, and I appreciate her review, because those are complex legal issues that, you know, I'm not trained to do, and that's why we have an attorney. However, I will say this, there is a perceived, perceived conflict of interest by the public when this kind of thing occurs. Legally, it may be. In your, in your opinion, be careful, in your opinion, there's a perceived, or maybe not your opinion, I don't know. Well, yeah, I've talked to people about, hey, this is what we have, what do you think about that? And they're kind of shocked by it. And so what I'm concerned about a city, any government entity, is that there is a level of distrust with government in general. And when we have a perceived, in my opinion, conflict of interest, it doesn't help. So my position on this is that unless he resigns from the P&amp;Z board, I'm gonna vote no on this. And that's because we have to have arms-length type of situations, and legally, there may be arms-length, but the public's perception of it is, whoa, wait a minute, the head of the Planning and Zoning is being awarded, his company is being awarded a $12 million contract, and what I've learned today is there's been other contracts too, and I don't know how much or where, but it's the perception of that that really concerns me. And we need to be careful of it, so therefore, I'm, I'm just telling you, I'm gonna vote no.
You know, if I can interject for just a second, Mayor, you know, Councilmember Roder must talk to different constituents than I do, but the constituents I talked to are very pleased at the bid prices, and that TML was the low bidder of over a million dollars on the base bid, and I believe over a million dollars on the additive alternative, alternates. That's what they're focused on, because they're tired of their sewer bills going up. And, you know, we should all be happy that this came in, and I think it's absolutely ridiculous to think that there's a conflict of interest here. And when we have attorneys that are saying there is no conflict, that should be the end of it. Thank you.
I do, Councilmember Roder brought this up, and for those that are looking, there's a, there is a chain of emails. I'd like to read from some, Councilmember Roder very appropriately, if he feels that there's a conflict of interest, brought it forward. He received a response from Caitlin, and the first response was Friday, September 10th at 1:23 PM, and Caitlin in the email said, as I provided in my guidance below, I do not see a conflict of interest, and Caitlin is Caitlin, claim, our city attorney. I do not see a conflict of interest with TML Construction being the low bidder on the HARB's Phase Two project that would either require Brian's removal from Planning and Zoning, or would disqualify TML Construction from qualifying as the low bidder. Further, I'm not seeing a conflict or any correlation between TML Construction's contract for the HARB's Phase Two project or the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Conflicts of interest are fact and circumstance specific, and I assess this contract accordingly under Title 18 and Title 74, I don't know code. So as a, as a member of the city council, Councilmember Roder and others received information from the attorney. Following that email, Councilmember Roder emailed to Caitlin and said, based on a smell test, which obviously is not a legal test, it stinks to high heaven, I plan to file a complaint and alert the media. Council, and the response then from Caitlin is that, let me make sure that we do this correctly, that as an individual, Councilmember Roder can do whatever he would like from a personal nature. But it seems, so, so it seems that, first of all, Councilmember Roder appropriately brought up issues, those issues were addressed. Specifically, Councilmember Roder did not like the answer, it appears, based upon his email saying that it stinks to high heaven, and he consularly complained and alerted the media. He can, as an individual, do that, but from a council standpoint, this was addressed and rectified. I get a lot of emails, I have received none with respect to any issue of conflict of interest with TML or Brian Peterson. I just, for the record, want to make sure that Councilmember Roder acted appropriately for a time with respect to his leadership and membership and partnership as the city council representative. He did not take that legal information. He took it, I don't know, I don't want to speak for Councilmember Roder, but he took it, but he said, it's not a legal test, it stinks to high, high heaven, and I plan to file a complaint and alert the media. He may, as an individual, do that, but I hate to see, because of some perception, and from a legal standpoint, not valid perception, that an individual's livelihood or name is being dragged through the mud. So has there ever been, Caitlin, that you have been able to find any conflict of interest with respect to any decision that Mr. Peterson has made with respect to the city or TML?
I tried to address that, I believe, one of the responses to Councilmember Roder, just the, on the question of just the contract, and that's what I tried to limit it to, was the question of just, and I tried to explain that, that that's what the assessment is, it's fact and circumstance specific, so to the extent the issue or question is, you know, is there a conflict because Mr. Peterson's chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission and TML Construction is the low bidder? And that's what I looked at. It's not, there, there isn't an allegation that, you know, looking back historically for many years, that there was some conflict under the local and he's planning after him sitting for, for HARB's. I assessed it under, he's a non-compensated, you know, public official, he sits on a committee under that statute. Are you or are you not prohibited from contracting with an agency when you're not a member of that agency? And the answer is no. The statutes, the conflict statutes that govern the city and what we look at are just running to, what are those requirements? And, and I mentioned that to Councilmember Roder, and I provide that here for all of you. And even if it was the city, he's not outright prohibited. The, I can't find that code section here, but there's four requirements in that code about when you're a non-compensated public official and you want to bid. One of them is, you know, the bid has to be truly procured and bid, and it's open, and you don't prepare the bid, and you give notice that, that there's a potential conflict review. But that, none of that's applicable here since it's not the city that's bidding. So I just point that out for reference too, is that even if the contract was with the city, he's not out, he's not prohibited from doing it under the statutes. I mean, those are the statutes that govern a non-compensated public official exemption. So that's what I looked at in making that decision. And, and anybody, you know, any of you, and I told this to Councilmember Roder too, that's my, my advice and guidance as the city attorney on the issue, but, I mean, I can't prevent him or any, anybody from wanting to, you know, find out more information, file a complaint or do anything like that. I give advice, it's up to you guys to take it, that's the role, that, you know, I don't, I don't enforce, I don't, you know, stop them from, stop them from asking questions, I don't want that, I want people to reach out and to bring up issues and ask those questions.
Thank you, Dick.
I think it's awful hard, and we've been doing this a long time, I've been doing this for 30 years, and maybe that's too long. You wonder sometimes whether it's worth it when people behind you are kicking you in the teeth and trying to, trying to mess up what you do. We always try to do things legally, that's why we have attorneys representing each one. It isn't just Caitlin's word that this was not a problem, it's who other attorneys decide, plus the people, the experience that we've had and dealt with and all that. As far as constituents griping about it, we know what the political atmosphere is in this country today, and it's pretty tough. Because if, somebody can say something about something, and if it's on the media, all of a sudden, everybody believes that's true, and how do you disprove it? And that's what's going on. I've never had one person in the 30 years that I've been doing this kind of stuff complain about a conflict, conflict of interest or anything like that, because we try very hard to make sure that doesn't happen. Now, we've had complaints about the sewer rates and some other things like that, because nobody likes paying for all this stuff, but we absolutely break our tails to make sure that this is done in a proper manner, that's why we have attorneys, that's why we have very educated personnel doing these jobs in the first place to keep us out of trouble. So once this information was given, and rightfully so, if there's a conflict, we need to know about it. There's no question about that, but once that has been dispelled, why is it thrown out all over the place and promoted, just like it was through when it isn't?
And I think that that was my, I don't, there can be valid discussion and questions, and should be, but, but I don't feel that it's appropriate to drag someone's name through the mud. When an individual had already received guidance with respect to a non-conflict of interest, and it concerns me, I mean, votes can be made, and everyone can vote however way they want, but if it's not with respect to council and with respect to, and it's looked at from a personal level or a vendetta level, and I don't know that this is, and I hope it is not, but that kind of thing is concerning. So any other questions or comments or discussion? Yes?
I'll, I'll just say that I know that Caitlin thoroughly researched whether or not this was a conflict, she stated all the reasons, not only to council members, but to the public, and I believe that this is not a conflict of any sort.
And I'll contend with my statement, maybe, it may be legal, but it stinks to high heaven. We have that on record.
Good. There are some things that do, that's for sure, anyone of them.
Do we have a motion to approve the contingent bid award resolution for Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board Wastewater Treatment Plant, Phase Two Construction? So moved. Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing them, we'll call up, please, Caitlin.
Councilmember Delane?
Yes.
Councilmember Roder?
No.
Councilmember Fandabaker?
Yes.
And Council President Satterfield?
Yes. Thank you. Sandy, for the approval of treaty county agreement to provide law enforcement services?
I'll take that one, because, Mayor, thank you. You have in your packet, and I think Brett even prepared a memo for it, discussing the updated contract with the Sheriff's Department for Law Enforcement Services, a total amount of $402,354 annually. No additional substantive changes between the draft we previously had, still for four deputies, three and a half with the officer, there's a set amount to go to dispatch services. Stu, I don't know if you have any else you wanted to mention, just really the amount that changed from what we had last year.
That's correct, Ellen.
Stu, based upon this agreement though, I think it's important to understand, I know that, that the previous agreement provided flexibility, if in fact, are you comfortable with that, for that amount of money that your organization will be able to provide the services directly that are indicated in the agreement? How did I do, was that?
Very well, sir. Stu, go over the record. Yes.
Yes to what?
All the flexibility. So, so the, you know, the sheriff has, time and time again, made very public statements that he wants to be your police department agency for law enforcement services. And that we strive to give you guys as much law enforcement service as well and above with this contract, actually pays for the detectives, the rectors, the professional staff, and everything else, and 24-hour service.
And it will, we will also have the opportunity to be able to utilize the other services other than direct services to the city, Peyton, Satterfield, all the other things that we have been able to partner with you in terms of agreements and services. Absolutely. Okay, I have read the agreement, thank you. Any questions, please?
The one change, and Brett mentions it here in his memo, is I forgot this, they dropped the standard of 1.6 officers per thousand, that was in prior, because they were agreeing, that's not in this one anymore, just to mention that.
Yes, do you have a question? Do you have a question, any questions?
A question, I, um, I'll wait till there's a comment.
Okay. Uh, do you have any questions for Stu? Anyone have questions for Stu?
Caitlin? I, I have a question. Caitlin, I'm reading this memo, and I see Brett wrote it, but you're responding. Uh, it kind of confused me a little bit, because in the summary in the second paragraph, it says, the services to be provided shall include daily motor patrols during daytime and nighttime hours with four full-time deputies. So, what confused me is when I looked at that, and then.
Great question.
And then the, uh, last full paragraph of just above recommendations, it says, this contract includes for next year, this summer increase to two deputies as well. Are we going to six?
I think for the summer, they anticipate adding two deputies, just for the summer.
Yes, that's correct. So, what we did.
It should have said increase of two deputies, not two, two deputies.
Right.
All right, so we'll have six for the summer. And so, we're getting six for this amount of money.
Correct.
That's all I'm gonna know.
That was based upon the letter. It was, okay, do we have two, and are we going to four? Or do we have four and one and six?
And I believe the sheriff's office did that this summer, uh, with additional deputies.
Yeah, the city of Hayden supplied extra funding, uh, for extra deputies. As you know, a lot of our calls are not just a single deputy's response anymore. And so, to, to ensure that they had, uh, they afforded us, I don't know.
Thank you.
And, and I guess, peeping back on the item we proved earlier, if the doc is in place next summer, I mean, that could really impact, have a really positive, hopefully, we hope, impact the sheriff's office.
But this is separate from that.
It is, I just hope that, you know, if they're gonna get, they have more presence here, that could be a good thing, too, just with the timing on the additional deputies.
Thank you. Remember, while they go home alive at night, so. Do we have a motion to approve the Cooney County, uh, the Cooney County Agreement to provide law enforcement services?
Yes, we do.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing, and roll call, please, Caitlin.
Councilmember Delane?
Yes.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Ganderay?
Yes.
And Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, thank you for coming to a discussion meeting with respect to issues that needed to be put forward. There is still, uh, a council meeting for the twenty-eighth of September. Uh, any other information for council before we, uh, discuss?
I wanted to introduce. Yeah. We, um, I just wanted to introduce, since I became the development director on Monday, um, we were able to get Zach Tribino, who's sitting in the front row. He's our new senior planner, and, uh, he's been here three and a half days, and he's hit the ground running. So, we're very excited to have him on board, and, I mean, he has, he has some experience, so.
Nice to be here, thank you for having me.
It's a pleasure, we look forward to serving with you. Uh, if there's nothing else, I need a, yes?
I just wanted to make a council.
Please.
Member report. I was recently selected, um, by the EPA to be a subcommittee member on their small cities advisory subcommittee. And that committee is under their larger, um, their local government advisory committee. Um, there were, um, about a hundred and fifty, uh, candidates, and I am the sole, uh, uh, I received the sole appointment for the, uh, West Coast. And it's a voluntary position, and, um, in it, I'll be helping to make recommendations to the EPA here in Washington, D.C. So, I'm very excited about this opportunity. I've just rece- received notice that the first meetings will be held in mid- mid-October. Um, the meetings will be, EPA will share their vision for the next several years, um, including, uh, providing clean and safe water, um, safeguarding and revitalizing communities, addressing climate change, and advancing environmental justice. And one of the reasons I'm so excited about, um, having this opportunity to serve is, um, has to do with our situation here in Hayden. We're a small city, and we have to spend millions and millions of dollars to meet the regulatory requirements on our sewer treatment plant. And so, that is one thing I'm going to share about the impacts that small cities have to spend that amount of money to meet the stringent requirements. And so, I just wanted to, to let council know.
Thank you, represent us well, because it's unacceptable.
And, and I'll provide updates, um.
Anything else? Um, we do have one individual in the hospital that's unemployed. Um, we wish that individual the best, and, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Sure.
Meeting is adjourned.